Page's missing.
Two, four, page fourteen. Yeah, then the next page starts out, it looks like the middle of the sentence.
Okay.
Good evening.
Second. Public hearing. George. Okay, our twenty-three, the I S O O O six. Those be Sarah D Moriarty. Leo Roche. Variance section. Three. A. Please. Sixty-five. Eight-seven.
First time. At. Uh. Thank you for presentation or your question. After that, we'll return to the in favor. Oh. Well. Uh, after that. We will. Close the public hearing, we will say the G N talk.
There are budding owners. Owner of four, forty-nine to fifty-three. West Main LLC. Owner of four holders building LLC. Owner of three steamboat war properties. Owner of two Jerome properties. Owner of forty-eight to fifty West Main Street LLC. Owner of four Roche forty-six LLC. Owner of five Leatherneck Associates LLC. Owner of two Irish Eyes LLC. Owner of three Mar Daniel E. Owner. Yeah, three Elizabeth Court. Owner of one Mystic Parking LLC. Owner of two Jones Horace W. The fourth. Twenty-eight West Main. Owner of three Aston Gatsby LLC. Owner of three Pearl Street Capital Limited Liability Company. One forty-four Governor's Hill Road. Owner of three gravel street. Owner of three Jerome Properties LLC. Deal box one eighty-eight. Owner of six Monument Street LLC. Deal box five. There may be, there's a couple. Deal box one eighty-eight. Owner of six Monument Street LLC. Monument Street, three blocks, yeah. Owner of five Pearl Street Capital Limited Liability Company. That's also at one forty-four Governor's Hill Road.
Number one on the third page.
Pearl Street Capital LLC, one forty from the Governor's. Owner of seven Steel Beverly B. Forty-five Clear Drive. An owner of eight Pearl Street LLC. And these were mailed on the December twenty-ninth. For compliance with the requirements.
It's a couple of housey, any phones to our library. And number two is, there's one, two, three, and number four. The reform capital possession of things. And I must get the trustful post bonus for two weeks.
Okay.
True.
Yeah.
I sure.
I can still barely hear you. I can hear Doug when he speaks directly into that gadget on the table, a little better than everybody else.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name's Sarah D Moriarty. I am here on the application for two and four Pearl Street. I reside at thirty Fisher's U Drive in Groton. I'm a local attorney. I'm here with Leah Roche, the applicant who owns two and four Pearl Street and John Walsh, our architect. Before I begin my presentation, Mr. Chairman, can Bruce see, like if I, if we put materials on the table, can he see them?
We will see the camera.
Probably not, but I can hear you pretty well.
Okay.
Describe what's on there, just is, is what you have is was submitted?
Yes.
The most simple call out the patient.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. So. My plan is to read my statement and please interrupt me if you have questions. And then when I conclude my statement, I'm gonna bring Mr. Walsh over here, who can bring you through the actual design plans and speak to a few of the other safety concerns if anyone has any questions. That. Does sound okay? All right. Thank you. So we are here tonight to request a variance seeking relief from section three point three-two A of the zoning regulations for increased lot square footage. Noticed of butters have been provided as has noticed to have butters in accordance with your zoning regulations. Mr. Roche owns four Pearl Street and recently purchased two Pearl Street, which are in the MDD zone. The lot square footage in this zoning district is sixty-five percent. Separating these two parcels is a narrow alleyway that decreases in width as you go further back. Both two and four Pearl Street were built in eighteen fifty-four predating zoning regulations.
The, please. Open to the sky, the alleyway?
It is. Yep. And it goes this way, if you will, from the street, almost in a pie wedge with Mr. McDermott can steamy. Um, the footprint of these buildings has remained unchanged since originally built. Two Pearl Street is presently approximately eighty-four point six percent of lot square footage and four Pearl Street is eighty point six of lot square footage. We're proposing tonight to merge two and four Pearl Street and infill the alleyway connecting the two buildings. By doing this, we would be increasing the already existing non-conformity of lot square footage. If we merged the lots and did not infill the alleyway, we would be at eighty-two point four eight percent. By infilling the alleyway, we are increasing the lot square footage to eighty-six point four percent, increasing the already existing non-conformity by three point nine percent. Our hardship for requesting this variance for increased lot square footage is based on the safety of our community. This is an unusual hardship that has not been used often, however, is in the very definition of the statute of Connecticut case law allowing for the granting of a variance, which states in pertinent part, in making its decision, the ZBA must consider public health, safety, convenience and welfare and property values. The applicant must show that the variance will not substantially affect the municipality's comprehensive zoning plan. The safety component that I'm referring to is a reset, excuse me, is a direct result of connecting the two buildings by infilling the alleyway. By doing this, we greatly reduce the risk of fire because the alleyway is eliminated. Should a fire break out in the alleyway, both buildings will likely catch fire, creating a black fire, putting other buildings in jeopardy. Also, by reduce, excuse me, by reducing the alleyway. We can remove what's referred to as a gang plank for firemen. Putting fires out in alleyways such as this put our firemen at most risk. I have submitted a letter from our prior prior chief who reviewed this project and pointed out the safety benefits to connecting the two buildings. I will direct you to the pertinent part of the letter that states. Quotes, regarding the proposed plans for future modifications to two and four Pearl Street. Our office has reviewed the proposed plans for the connection of both buildings, making the structure one building, which would eliminate the small alleyway between, between the two buildings. This proposal will stop a potential exposure issue between the two buildings in the event of a fire in either building. I personally have also done my own research as to the riskiness of firemen in firefighting in alleyways and have learned that they possess significant hazards, such as ask access, ascertaining what started what's on fire and preventing the alleyway fire from spreading to adjoining buildings. If possible, it seems to be a very prudent decision to eliminate the alleyway. In this instance, we find ourselves with the same person owning both properties and having the ability to merge the lots and infilling the alleyway. I would like to note that the plans submitted for this application for the interior are only conceptual and we're looking for a variance for the increased lot square footage to merge the lots and connect the two buildings. If you read my narrative that I submitted in the application prior to this meeting, you would notice that I did reference ADA compliance by moving the kitchen from the second floor of four Pearl to the first floor of two Pearl, which is referenced in these plans. At this time, the applicant is unsure if he'll move the kitchen downstairs or his dining room to the first floor. An argument can be made for AD compliance for either, as if the kitchen is moved. Then the, it becomes more ADA compliant for employees. And if the dining room is moved, it becomes more ADA compliant for patrons. However, we're only requesting a motion for the approval of the merger of the lots and the infill of the alleyway. In conclusion, we believe this application meets the criteria to grant a variance for the following reasons. No negative impact on the surrounding properties nor affect other parcels in the district. This hardship, i.e. the safety of the two buildings was not created by the owner. And lastly, the granting of the variance will not be detrimental to public wealth or injurious to other properties or improvements in the neighborhood in which the property is located, but in contrast improves the safety and existing of the two buildings and quite possibly the surrounding buildings. That, since is my narrative and ask Mr. Walsh if he can demonstrate what we're actually looking to do, please.
I can ask you a question.
Sure.
On page fifteen, what we have. Which is that.
Okay.
You quote, it gives me your quoting Connecticut general statute eight thousand six three, is that correct? Is that, is that a verbatim quote from CGS eight thousand?
Can I see? I'm sorry.
This is all on page fourteen.
I don't believe it's a direct quote from the statute. I believe it's a summary of the statute, but I can look right now while Mr. Walsh makes his presentation.
So you, you did that summary then?
No, I pulled that summary, I believe, from the legislative notes, but I'll, I'll. I'll confirm.
Just so on, before we start this. Be fourteen to fifty, is there a page missing here, Tom?
Yeah, uh, one that says, as noted, four Pearl Street House. Uh, restaurant known as Harp and Hound.
Well, I get, I get the initial plan and it continues on the page fourteen, which just says that. And then fifteen is, it seems to start in the middle of a sentence. I just want to make sure I got the whole.
Yes.
I have that.
Like, let's just start, Vincent, Vincent.
That's adequate, yep.
What's? Okay.
You have the summary of project?
Yes, that's close, yeah.
Yeah, I just have this one here, which is the first page of the whatever.
Can I see that again?
Sure. And.
That single page that you, that seems to be out of order.
It should be.
So.
It's in the, yeah.
I think that's just. A separate document.
A good summary of project.
Which should be three pages.
That's the page before this one, if they're out of order.
Now we go to the function. Oh, okay. Yeah, all right. Okay. Makes sense. Thank you. Yep. Yep. Walsh.
Yeah, you guys all set? Yeah, okay. All right. My name is John Patrick Walsh. I'm a registered architect both Rhode Island and Connecticut. My offices are at Nine Canal Street and Westley, Rhode Island. And I've been working with, with Leo and several projects and Pearl Street is, is the latest one. Um. Hey, what? Let me just, I'll put the site line up here, just so you could see it. Hopefully, the camera. But Pearl Street is facing. Your gentleman, okay? And this is the alley right here. Um, someplace. It's this location right here. And it tapers down, as Sarah said, to the back. It gets very narrow back here. Okay? At this back area, I can barely walk through. Okay, there's telephone pole there. It's really tight. Um, so. Uh, it's about six feet, seven feet in that range. This gets down to about, you know, maybe, maybe two feet. At the, at the, at the widest, but there's also telephone pole here and guidelines, guidelines and stuff that come down. So it's, it's a really congested spot. So the, the goal is to, there's an electric meter that exists right here. Meter bank that goes to telephone poles right here. And basically what we're proposing doing is connecting these two buildings. At this point, and going back. All the way to the back, like that. So this, we can still get to the meter, the meter bank, all that where power comes in. But we shut this portion of the alley down. Okay? And we connect the building to, up, up to the second story. Um. There are a number of reasons for doing that. As, as Sarah pointed out, they're all valid reasons. Um, and we did have a meeting, Leo and I met with the, um, the fire department. We had the fire officials come down there. Um, and was.
Tony, Tony, yeah.
Yeah, Tony. And, um, they all looked at it and they, they felt it was a good, a good idea. It's, it's a dangerous situation to have two buildings that are this close, separated by an alley that converges. If firemen were to get in here and the fire breakthrough up here, they're trapped. Um. And the other thing is that these buildings are old. They're built in the eighteen fifties as, as Attorney Moriarty mentioned. And they're wood structures. They do not have firewall separating them as many of the buildings Mystic don't. There are also openings in these buildings that open into the alleys. And by today's current building code, you wouldn't be able to, to really construct these buildings this close together without, you know, fire rating walls and doing all sorts of stuff to, to, to protect them. So, um.
You wouldn't have eighty-two percent coverage either.
Right, yeah, right. I got you. Yeah. Um. But I mean, what we're trying to do is, is I think, you know, to eliminate what, what's a potential, um, public health, um, safety issue. Uh, it is an area for, you know, people, there's stuff that gets tossed back in there and stuff, people walking by. It's an area that would be prone for a fire to start. Um, yes, somebody drop a cigarette, drop a cigar, blows back in there, you know, it's gonna go. And if it goes, it's gonna take, it's gonna take both these buildings for sure. Okay? And probably, yeah. So, so the, the, the project, while getting into too much of what our design stuff is about. One of the other things that, you know, we talked to the fire marshal about and, and, and the, um, fire chief was the fact that in doing this, also sprinkling these buildings. Okay, so we're, the, the goal is to really, to, to bring them up, to protect them, to protect the surrounding buildings, as well as to protect Mr. Rutch's investment. Yep.
Question, uh, all buildings, same height, so the number of stories?
The same number of stories, but they're a little bit different in height. This building has a flat roof. This building has a slightly, slight, very slight gable to it. So they're a little bit different in height. But we bring it up to the height of, let's see how much building, probably up to the height of. Leo's four, right up to higher four.
Another question. So what you're doing is you're joining the two buildings, the property together.
Right. We're, we're merging the lots and I believe we're merging.
Merging them. So from a title perspective, the two lots will become one lot and they'll become one contiguous building.
You're gonna do some work in the kitchens.
There will certainly be interior work done. We're not sure what just yet. Um, right now, on the Harp and Hound building, uh, four Pearl is Harp and Hound. So four Pearl, the second story houses the kitchen and additional dining room. One of those rooms, if granted the variance, will move downstairs, which is why I was explaining the ADA compliance component of it. We're just not sure which yet.
Yeah, and the harp up in this area here is a additional seating. The back is the kitchen. So one or the other is gonna move down into the first floor.
Essentially, that's gonna be considered one building. One piece of property.
Exactly. Which is why we're looking for the increased lot square footage.
Right now, Mr. Roche owns both lots.
He's in the unique position of owning both buildings.
Essentially, lead him to himself to combine the lots.
Exactly.
Or to Mrs. Roche. I do appreciate that.
Um, so presumably, it, there's gonna be. Some in, ingress and egress between the two buildings once they're combined together on both the first and the second floors.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's, essentially, it's gonna be a, a one, it's one building.
Right, and fully code compliant.
Um. You spoke about sprinklers. Is that? Some, uh, undertaking that you have agreed to with anyone or is that just in the plans or?
It's something that we discussed with the fire marshals, uh, the fire marshal and the fire chief, and they were, they, they received it very favorably. So that's the approach we're gonna go, but what's.
At present, there's no sprinklers and.
Present neither building has sprinklers.
Um. There's a letter here from Anthony Manfredi, who is the fire marshal, fire chief. He's still the current fire chief that.
He has since resigned. This has been a project long and coming.
So have you been in contact with the new fire marshal?
No, we were in.
The assistant partnership, what is that?
Yeah, can I see the, the letter? Just a sec. I think he's, uh, in the bottom, the C C's.
This is it. That's it.
He wants to see who the letter was carbon copy, Jim.
Oh, she just signed it, Anthony, no, the, the, it was.
Assistant, the assistant fire, fire chief.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, this was signed, it's not dated, so I'm assuming this was signed some time ago.
It was, it was signed in the early summer of last year, um, when we started this project.
Twenty-three or twenty-two?
Twenty-three. And what Mr. Walsh is, is saying is that when the, the existing chief, Mr. Manfredi, walked through the building, he was with the assistant, Mr. Manfredi, and since resigned, the assistant is now the acting fire chief, who is well aware and in support of the project.
That's a question for Tom, I guess. Is that presumably, once this is, if it's merged and the variance is granted, this still has to go to planning, planning and zoning?
They will need to make an application to planning and zoning question. Right.
So that's all. And historic district involved in this, you gotta go there as well. Yeah. We're just, we're just a way station on your own journey here.
And Mr. Walsh went to the H D C, um, I believe in the early summer of last year. And they were, I wasn't at the meeting and I don't speak for you, but I believe they were in support of the project, but they said, go to Z B A first and then come back and see us.
Right, yeah, they were, they've seen this. They were very supportive of it, thought it was a great idea and just said. Go see planning and zoning and Z B A and get back to us.
Then another question for Tom. Presumably then, if there's gonna be a requirement for, um, sprinklers and planning and zoning do that, or should that be a condition of if we were to grant a variance? Uh, we could condition it upon, uh, the installation of sprinklers in both, in the entire building.
I believe that's a condition based on the, the amount of work they're doing. It would be with the building department. I don't know if it's something that the Z B A would wanna take on, force upon them, but I think with the amount of work they're doing, it's gonna be a requirement anyway of the building department.
And you're, you're representing here that you're gonna fully sprinkle them?
Yes, okay, sure. Spot on.
Let's define them. He asks, is there anybody speaking there or in opposition?
So I should just comment, I have two letters in favor. They're actually from the same end of this rule. He just owns two properties on Pearl Street, which I'd like to submit evidence. Exactly the same letter. And I can read them for you, or you can read them yourself, whichever is.
Yeah, why don't you read them? So Bruce.
Sure, all right. I'll be happy to read them. They're, they're, um, from the owners of three and the five Pearl Street, Ari Biggity. And it just says, uh, re-letter of support emerging two and four Pearl Street, to whom it may concern is the owner of free Pearl Street, five Pearl Street. I am greatly in support of Leo's plans to increase his property footprint by merging the two properties, two and four Pearl Street. Leo has been an exceptional property owner in town and he has greatly improved his property over time to match the historic characteristics and charm of Mystic. And I'm in support of Leo and merging his properties located at two and four Pearl Street. Leo is an exceptional property owner and exceptional member of our community and is a great benefit to downtown Mystic. Respectfully submitted, Ali Bigby, three and five Pearl Street owner, January.
And that's directly across the street from two and four. Okay. First morning. These are essentially the two, two letters. So I should exert one. Would be caller first, number one. Second letter would be separate. Second letter would be separate. This building, you're not planning on having an apartment up there.
Apartments now, but the interior design is still in its infancy. So if we need to come back for a variance, that will be staged staged to for the apartments.
Were you able to see the?
So Tom was actually able to look it up for me and he said that it was verbatim.
It is in the, it is in the file. We don't need to stamp it, it's already on. It's not additional.
Okay. Okay, uh, Bruce, any questions?
Of course.
Bruce. Bruce, are you there?
The door's always open, so he's.
Well, I think essentially what you're doing is you're taking old buildings. Wide-sized properties. About the same size. You're combining them together, gonna improve the safety and the fire protection of both buildings. Where now there's no appro, there's now there's none of that.
Summed it up perfectly.
Yeah, I I appreciate the fact they wanna merge the buildings and that seems like a reasonable thing to do. I don't know if fire has much to do with it. Those buildings have been there a hundred years. I don't know if there's any history involving that. But it it it's a reasonable case, I think.
We're not, we're not deliberating yet, Bruce. We're just, do you have any questions for anybody?
No, well, actually, my question was, is there any history involving that alleyway? Which I can't quite remember, but is, does it have any history of having problems from the fire people? Or did they just say it was a good idea because uh it was a good idea?
No, they, as far as I know, Bruce, they don't, they haven't had any issues uh with fire that I recall. But it it is, it's a potential kinda kinda hazardous area for a fire to start in. And that's why they they're supporting this. They they feel it's a good air, uh, good idea, makes this. Makes these buildings safer and makes the buildings around them safer, you know, as we know, we've, those of us who have lived around Mystic. We've seen enough of Mystic go up. It doesn't take much once it gets going.
Mm-hmm, okay, thank you.
Do you have anything else, sir? Nothing in the pile?
No additional information. Uh, Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed it last night uh in their commission meeting and they had no comments.
Oh, there's nothing else? We'll call the public hearing due close. It's uh seven thirty-five.
So we're moving on.
Well, all the discussion board motion, the reason has been is that sometimes there's something where. What was it, spread it into two parts? So if we're paying for motion.
Okay, okay. Bruce, your thoughts?
I think that the uh the fire hazard is uh pretty remote, to be honest with you. But uh it is a possibility nonetheless. And uh Mystic being what it is today, it's uh probably more. Apparent for any kind of a fire hazard than not, so I can appreciate their their position on that. Uh, so I I would uh be agreeable to the uh the motion if we put one fourth to join the buildings.
I've got thoughts.
These buildings are kinda unique, as is downtown Mystic, from from the rest of the zoning in the town, obviously. And I'm persuaded by the fact that sprinklers are gonna be put into both buildings. As part of this whole deal. In the fact that requested variance is essentially de minimis. In terms of you're only adding two or three percent additional lot coverage to an almost totally covered lot anyway. And. The ADA argument to me may be peripheral, but. If. It is an argument that that would promote the public welfare if you are increasing the uh. The access for uh people who are disabled. So based upon all that, I'm in favor of the bringing the variance. Having moved in here to Mystic in seventy-eight, there was a fire. In Mystic, now on the block, I don't know if, I can't remember. On that block by the bridge. Central, central. And so things can happen. And I think that maybe those buildings have gotten very lucky and nothing did happen. The time that, from the time they were built. So I for one am very supportive of the applicants. And especially what. Fire protection, I think that is. Necessary when you have the opportunity to do it, do it.
Those who are smarter than me have said it all, so we'll.
We move, that we grant the variance as requested? Second it?
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all's. Caris, yeah, he misses him. Caris four zero.
Four zero.
Four zero.
Thank you. Good luck with this.
Well, twenty-four years, three years.
That's a short time. I I talked to a lady.
You, not for me.
I talked to a lady, let's see. Two days ago, was the first tenant in the apartments in the new central building. Yeah, so you know, that's finished the year over year and I think the first one that moved in.
They've been taking their time interiors, like finishing, finishing out and everything.
Yeah, she she said she moved in and they're still working. Mostly trucks.
Yeah. Yeah, they they have change orders all the time. They're still changing interiors and yeah.
She's happy as a clam looking out on the river, but I'm not sure she's so happy with this morning when the tide was was laughing over the edge.
There's somebody there when they're unloading sheetrock. One drop breaking down.
You know, with the lift up there, I know. All right.
Upper car sons?
Uh, none?
None, okay. Uh, we have three successive minutes to approve. Uh, first is August nine.
Did you get?
And uh.
Oh, here, I'm sorry. Point of order here. Can I, can I vote for the minutes even though I wasn't at the meeting?
Uh, if you were, did you watch the minutes and or you won't watch the meetings or anything, you probably should.
Yeah, I think I should. So I'm not, you got enough people for the.
In uh. Uh, three, to for the minutes, there's enough, there's three.
Okay.
All right, so is there motion to make?
You guys.
Bruce is here. He's there and myself and John Manning. Get ready for motion?
No, no, I'm nothing if not consistent, though.
Tom? Motion?
I'll make a motion. Am I second here or first here? You're making, I'm making it, okay. Well, I I was at the the last, once you do the the ninth and November eighth, then I'll vote on the on the last one, because I was here.
All right. So what you've made is a second? Bruce, do you second?
Yes.
Oh, okay, all right. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All. Caris, four to zero.
I'll move, I'll move that we approved the minutes of the meeting on uh December thirteenth.
I think we wrapped all through them up.
No, cuz I said I wasn't gonna do the last one. All right, I don't care.
First two were just the three of you in the last one.
That's one, it's for the.
Doug moved, Tom seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Last one was four zero. Uh, there was no old business?
No.
Uh, there will be a uh application um zero Clark Lane on um. At the next meeting, January twenty-fourth, and then we've uh continued the meeting for twenty Pearl Street for February fourteenth.
What's zero Park Lane?
Uh, it is uh for.
Charles. Park is off of Charles.
Yeah, uh. It's for an access, uh, it it's a paper street, basically, and they need.
Where where is it?
Western Mystic area.
Western Mystic, um. Charles, Charles, Charles Street.
Yeah, so it's a paper street that they need a variance to gain access to.
Charles Street.
We'll we'll have that on the twenty-fourth and then in February, we're gonna have this twenty Pearl Street. What what is that then?
Uh, that is uh a um accessory dwelling unit.
Yeah, no, I got.
Yeah, yeah.
They just, they just have an issue with neighbors.
They are, they have one issue. They have one neighbor that um uh has concerns cuz he's an abutting neighbor and they're working on maybe a reconfiguration.
So. If we. Here is that.
It's right on the date. It's like thirty-four days.
Okay.
Yeah, thirty-five.
Oh, save our.
And they can request a continuance, you can grant it if necessary, but.
So here's the thing. Schedule says not less than ten calendar days, but not more than thirty days prior to the scheduled public hearing.
Oh, no, that's for the. Is that for the mailings?
Yeah.
Yeah, so for that's for the mailing. So for the um, when you open a public hearing. You have to close it within thirty-five, thirty-five days. Yes, when you open a public hearing, you have to close it within thirty-five days.
Public hearing has to be.
So it's open, yes.
So this doesn't, because we essentially, well.
It was advertised, so you have to open it.
So we opened it today.
Yes.
And postponed it.
Yes, another thirty-five day timeframe, yeah.
So that was, what day, February is that, like the thirteen?
Fourteen, yeah, it's like the thirty-fourth day of the timeframe.
Okay.
Tom just actually read the call.
It's in the record.
Hundred Marita Hall, that's why I like.
Oh, oh, yeah, I didn't.
That's that's how you really can open it, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's in the record.
Yeah, nobody else here.
Yeah.
Um, can you make sure that I. I had some difficulty in getting. And you and you may not, there may have been a reason for it.
Close this thing and then.
Yeah, let's stop it. I moved it with Germany.
All favor?
Agree, aye.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you.
Hey, my pleasure. Good to see you guys. See you next time.
Enjoy the sun.
Stay warm now.
Yeah, it's fifty here, it's fine.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.